Okay. Okay, I'm gonna call and order this North Bend City Council regular session on Tuesday, March 12th, 2024, 7:00 PM. And we'll.
I believe, right?
Consider the flag of the United States of America, consider the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. In this long, so that we can see the essence of our all.
I guess we will go to a roll call.
Counselor Jones.
Present.
Counselor Hamilton.
Here.
Counselor President Garwood.
Here.
Counselor Gall.
Here.
Counselor Schultz. Here. Counselor Noroff.
Here.
Number three is the consent calendar. Do I have a motion?
I move that we accept the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Um, object.
Okay.
I would like to pull the item number A off the consent calendar, please.
Okay. You'll amend your motion?
I guess. I'll know that we accept the consent calendar except. And I am a.
Second. Got a first and a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
I'm aye.
All opposed? Nobody? Do we have public comment?
Now we go.
You must now take three A.
Okay, we'll take.
For council rules.
Okay, we'll take three A minutes.
Uh, yes, I just.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Uh, you need to first entertain a motion and a second before you can enter discussion.
Entertain a motion to?
Uh, whatever the motion is before you can enter discussion. You can't enter discussion without an item on the table. So if the councillor wants to make a motion, that's how you get into discussion. So obviously, the item at hand is the approval of the minutes from February 27, 2024.
I move. I move that we are able to discuss the minutes as presented um, from February 12th, 2021, 2024.
Hmm, I may.
Twenty seventh.
Can we call on our city attorney? This is a business meeting, so what is the action? Um, you had a vis- uh, discussion meeting last night, so what you have presented for you is the opportunity to either um, approve them as presented, not approve them, or to make a motion to approve them with changes would be inappropriate. Uh, city attorney, do you agree, disagree?
Yeah, that's correct. So Counselor Nordoff, if you could make a motion indicating what change you would like to see, if any, that would be appropriate, then there will be a second and, and discussion.
All right, um, on item number 11 of the proposed minutes, it reads, um, under council comments, voice concerns about the staff recommendation of not involving the Parks Committee in the development of the new Parks Master Plan. Feels we need to have a property committee and would like to see it brought back. City Administrator David Milliron clarified the disinformation, misinformation regarding the appointment of the citizens to Parks Master Plan and expressed sadness about having to continually repeat in order to keep the record straight. I would propose that we.
Um, I still don't have a motion. I need a motion.
My motion is to amend my comments, Counselor Nordoff, to say that voice concerns about the staff recommendation and that the Parks Committee is not lapsed, it does have three members, and to include them, which is exactly what I said, please include the current Parks Committee members in the group to discuss the past Parks Master Plan. I'm not going to touch Mr. Milliron's comments. So that's the amendment, because if we had, we had been told that there was no Parks Committee any longer.
Counselor, you've, you've, you've made your motion. That would be the time for a, a second. And then there could be just further discussion.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
As expected, that's fine.
There being no seconds, the motion doesn't pass.
I move that we accept the consent calendar with item A being included.
Second.
I've got a first and a second to include the item three A on the consent calendar. Any discussion?
Well, you've already approved the consent calendar minus item A, so now it's just item A. It's not the whole thing.
Okay. I'll accept a motion to approve the, the minutes from February 27, 2024 as presented.
Second.
Okay. Now. Any discussion?
Sir, may I?
Yes, you can do whatever you want.
Uh, thank you, I appreciate it. Um, I just do, uh, want to point out, section 2.04.080 of your council rules per minute um, specifically states that the council may amend the minutes to reflect more accurately what transpired at a meeting. Upon receipt of the minutes in the council agenda packet, the council member should read the minutes and if possible, submit any changes, additions, or corrections to the city administrator in order that the recording of the meeting can be reviewed and a corrected copy of the minutes can be prepared prior to the meeting for the council's approval. Madam City Recorder, when did you send out the packets with the minutes?
Uh, I believe it was last Thursday.
Okay, thank you.
I've been sick for a week. I am just now barely functioning, so thank you very much, but it was not possible.
I appreciate that, but we also know when you picked up the minutes from your box. We also have a video recording of that. So I stand as, you can call a question, sir.
Call for the question. Everybody in favor of approving item three A of the minutes from February 27, 2024, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Now, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
All right, we'll pass on that. Now we're to a public hearing, correct? And this is the strip. Okay. This is time set for a public hearing on ordinance number 2074, an ordinance amending NBCC 5.01.010 and NBCC 5.01.070 regarding, regarding the creation of outdoor markets on private property. At this time, I'll open the hearing. And I'll ask, are there any conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts to report by the councillors? Seeing none? You're up.
Good evening, Council President and council members. Um, so the ordinance before you proposes to amend two sections of the North Bend City Code. Uh, section 5.01.010 adds a definition for outdoor markets and what the city should consider an outdoor market. And section 5.01.070 um, creates an exemption for outdoor markets from business license regulations. I can go into more detail if you'd like. But, or do you have to take any questions?
Well, if anybody's got any questions, I think we all read it.
No.
Yeah.
Anybody have questions?
Just, just for the listening audience, the, correct me if I'm wrong. So this is specifically for allowing um, outdoor markets to have basically a sponsor so that they're both in charge of um, collecting, making sure that those vendors take care of what they need to take care of. It makes it so they don't have to get a business license. And that facilitates having outdoor markets.
Yes-ish.
Correctly.
So, so this ordinance just creates the definition and the exemption subject to a council resolution, which is also later on tonight's agenda, which does do all of the things that you just mentioned.
Yeah, so the purpose is for us to have the permitting process streamlined for these large markets.
Correct, yes.
Better one day. Anyway.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I'll now open the public test mo- mo- portion of the public hearing. Written testimony has been entered into the record and provided to members of the council and staff. There's a time limit of three minutes per speaker, and each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to state, speak in favor of the ordinance number 2074? Seeing none, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition of ordinance number 2074? I'll now close the public hearing test portion. Do any members have, member to the council have additional questions about this matter for staff? There's no further discussion. I'll close the public hearing at this time. Okay. Next one, ordinance number 2074. It brings ordinance number 2074, ordinance amending NBCC 5.01.010 and NBCC 5.01.070 regarding the creation of outdoor markets on private property. Now I'll ask you to give your.
So just reiterate that, that um, everything that I just said, and if you have any more questions that popped up into your head in the last 30 seconds, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Very good.
I'll just stop here.
I'll now entertain a motion to add the first reading by title only.
I move to have the first reading of this ordinance by title only.
First by Counselor Jones, second by Counselor Hamilton. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. I have a first and a second. First reading, okay.
None here.
Yep, you're up.
All right, good afternoon, City Council. Uh, ordinance number 2074 and ordinance amending NBCC 5.01.010 and NBCC 5.01.070 regarding the creation of outdoor markets on private property.
Okay. I move that we have a second reading by by the law.
Second.
I have a first from Counselor Gall and a second from.
Counselor Schultz.
Counselor Schultz.
I didn't say it was Nordoff.
Oh, Nordoff. Okay, you're back up, Mark.
Did we have a, a vote on that motion?
Okay, we had a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now you're ready.
Thank you. Ordinance number 2074 and ordinance amending NBCC 5.01.010 and NBCC 5.01.070 regarding the creation of outdoor markets on private property.
Now can we take the vote? Do we vote?
Now we would have a motion to adopt ordinance number 2074. We'd look for a first and a second and then have some discussion.
I move to adopt ordinance number 2074 regarding the creation of outdoor markets on private property.
I'll second.
Got a first from Counselor Jones, a second from Counselor Hamilton. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Well, that's a roll call then. Ordinance.
Oh, good one. Is it roll call? You might get it. Okay, is it?
Counselor Jones, how's Danny's roll call?
In favor?
Counselor Hamilton?
In favor.
Counselor President Garwood?
For the ordinance.
Counselor Gall?
For the ordinance.
Counselor Schultz?
For the ordinance.
Counselor Noroff?
For the ordinance.
Thank you.
Hey, I guess we're done. That's quick.
Don't we have a resolution?
We have to do the legal stuff first.
Okay.
Do I have anything for the resolution? No. Okay, now we're on to resolution number 3343. Statute of criteria for accepting outdoor marketing vendors from North Bend business licensing requirements.
Well, I, I move, I recommend the city council adopt resolution number 3343 as presented.
Second.
Got a first from Counselor Schultz, second from Counselor Gall. For resolution 3343 establishing criteria for accepting outdoor market vendors for the North Bend business licensing requirements. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? What?
Yeah, number eight.
Okay. Oh. Number eight, inter, intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Building Code Division for E-Pet System Services. They're just like, it's just an extension of the contract we've got now, basically.
I move to approve IGAPO 440000002749 with the Oregon Building Codes Division.
Second. Yeah.
Yeah, I got the first from Counselor Schultz, the second from Counselor Gall. All those in favor?
We'll get to it, the discussion.
Oh.
Yeah, I think you.
First, second discussion, then we all vote.
Okay, discussion. Any discussion?
She's a teacher, she knows this.
Yeah.
I mean.
You get up here.
I'm not the cut.
Okay, no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And all opposed? None. Passes. Item number nine, ratification of IAFF Local 2406 Contract for the Fire Department Employees. We had a presentation by the Finance Director and the Fire Chief last night. Any questions of staff?
I move that we approve, we approve the three-year collective Barney Agreement among the city of North Bend, North Bend Professional Firefighters and IAFF Local 2406.
I'll second. Got a first from Counselor Gall, a second from Counselor Hamilton to ratify the IAFF Local 2406 Contract for the Fire Department. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody. Okay, action of any result from executive sessions. We didn't have one, so I guess we don't have that. City Administrator, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Council President and council members. Uh, we have started the 2025 budget process, uh, that is now underway. Uh, want to highlight a couple of things in the fire department. First, they're revitalizing its fire inspection program. Uh, this will, uh, cover all local businesses within the next two years. They, uh, will also be, um, swapping out, uh, the, uh, teams. So for instance, uh, each of the battalions will shift ABC and so that they get familiarity with other businesses throughout the process. Um, also, um, you may recall, we had received a very significant 300,000-plus grant for all of our SCUBA breathing apparatus. And so all of our, uh, old models, uh, were, uh, donated to, um, the Sykes Fire District. Did I say that right? Is it sixes or Sykes? It's sixes? Okay, in Georgia, it's Sykes, so that's why I went. So I appreciate that, same spelling. So thanks, chief. Um, also, um, I'd be remiss, um, if, um, I didn't tell you that the 57th Annual Pancake Feed, for which the chief says he was at every one of them, um, will occur again on Sunday, March 24th, from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And, um, it says, uh, seven bucks for adults, kids are $5, family are $25. Um, no exemption for council members. Um, the, uh, State Library of Oregon Grant gave us $9,902. Uh, this is a Library Services and Technology Act, uh, grant uh, for audiovisual equipment to enhance our meetings and conference rooms. We also received, uh, at the library, a $10,000 grant, uh, from the American Library Association. Uh, there are specifically their libraries transforming communities, accessible small and rural communities program. And this will be to make services more accessible for youth and families. Um, we received an all-time record, at least since I've been here, over 100 applications for a park maintenance worker position. Over 100 applications. Um, so we'll be conducting, uh, interviews, I believe, on Friday. Um, and also, um, the Parks Department's collaborating with Oregon Bay Area Beautification. We had a wonderful cleanup, over 40 people, uh, and organizations with them, uh, suborganizations showed up uh, on Saturday. Um, Aaron Bixler, our, um, uh, department head, was out there, uh, cooking hamburgers and hot dogs and uh, going all over facilitating. Uh, so they picked up litter, uh, they addressed invasive species, and then they also spread mulch on trails in both Fergie and then also Simpson, uh, parks. And, uh, we're finalizing an agreement with Couze Watershed Association to remove and control invasive, um, uh, weeds at no cost to the city. Uh, that'll help preserve our park's natural beauty and biodiversity, and as you recall, it's also one of the council goals. Uh, also, efforts are underway to get approval for using grant funds to clear a safety zone around the Parks Department shop and storage area. Um, and in fact, there's an update on that since this published. Um, CIS has, um, uh, approved, um, the grant for $5,000, um, to move forward, uh, with that under the fire risk and to improve security around the parks, uh, building. Um, also, pull highlight, um, Kelly, um, uh, Batdorf, um, is, uh, our new full-time aquatic director. You may recognize that name. She's, uh, previously, uh, worked with North Bend Pool. Uh, she is a certified pool operator, uh, most recently with, uh, Domingus, uh, Park Pool. Uh, we're also partnering with Domingus, uh, pool staff to offer a lifeguard instructor course in either, uh, late uh, spring or early summer. In the police department, they finished their rep training. This was a regional, uh, rep training. And so, uh, other agencies were invited in, and, um, whether or not they got notification or not, or maybe I'm breaking someone else's news, but I understand that, uh, Coos Bay, um, has or is about to get a grant for their reps.
Meaning the restraining.
Yes, um, yes, 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 yes. Um, uh, so you can say that's a rap. You can say, hold the mayo, just not to Officer Mayo. Um, regarding the, um, patrol fleet, um, we're proud to say that we've got, uh, five cars that'll be, um, uh, going into outfitting. We should expect them here and, uh, on the road, uh, by early July. And, um, uh, after, uh, multiple years of, um, being extinct, um, the, uh, police department with the leadership of, um, um, the Chief Mitz and Captain Perry have, uh, reinvigorated the Reserve, uh, Police Officers Program. And, um, there is a sergeant who's involved in that. Is there, is that correct? Am I?
Actually, uh, CRO Nick White.
All right, CRO Nick White is gonna take lead on that. Okay, thanks for, uh, correcting me on that. And, uh, don't let him know that he didn't get promoted. Um, and so, uh, we currently have two new, uh, Reserve Patrol Officers already and one Reserve Officer candidate. Um, they'll actually go through about six months of training, uh, which was, uh, kicked off with, uh, District Attorney Paul Frazier. So that's great. Um, what this does is it, um, uh, value adds to the department. Um, these will be, uh, their actual officers. Um, and, um, and then they can also, um, not only will they, uh, work with our, um, uh, department, but they can also be hired as security, um, and also, um, assist us at events and things of that nature. So this is, um, great, um, to, uh, extend the arm of, uh, uh, the department. Um, uh, and why do we need to do that? Well, that's because, um, uh, the department in February, uh, responded to 2,000 calls for service. So activities up there. Uh, in the engineering department, I'm proud to say that, um, they successfully been awarded a contract for a pipe repair project, um, supported by, um, uh, the Environmental Protection Agency Grant, so that is moving forward. That's great news. Uh, notices, notices have also been sent. Uh, you may recall that we brought before you, um, uh, changes over the last couple of years. One was with the International Property Management Code. Others were to review and rank, um, dilapidated properties. Um, so we have published public notices and you will, um, see, I believe, at the next meeting in two weeks, uh, potential, uh, public hearings on, uh, three properties, that being 3085 Sherman, 1878 Mead, um, and others to ensure, uh, community safety. With that, I'll hand it back to you. Thank you.
Okay. I haven't heard of any committee reports. Anybody got?
Special Events Committee, uh, we met last week. Uh, we have Simon from the mall, uh, Joe Bolick, the, the lead for the North Bend and Coos Bay Softball Tournament. Derek Ton, uh, the leader organizer for the Disc Golf Tournament, came in and provided all updates on what they have going on. The mall is planning a full family fun day, which may include a car show. Derek's received support from the local Disc Golf Club. Joe was progressing with the planning of the softball game, considering the addition of a 50/50 drawing. Uh, the July Jubilee Princess Program. We are exploring ways to make it more uh, inclusive, to develop more um, comprehensive program for all students. And we are rebranding it as far as the North Bend July Ambassadors. And we are launching our new logo contest for the, in the community, so they can come up with a logo and submit it and we can pick a logo for this year. So if anybody wants any crayons and draw one up, have.
No, we just have a K.
Yeah, we got the K. So that's all I have, and we, uh, will be continuing on that. And, uh,
Okay, any other committee reports? Seeing none, we'll go to council comments. Uh, Counselor Noroff?
Um, it was sad to see that, that the Deveraux relocation, the money wasn't, wasn't as expected, I suppose. And, um, so they're kind of back to square one on that, so that's, it's unfortunate. Um, so hopefully, something will come, come together at some point. And soon, I have, um, taken the opportunity today to make copies of the article that had been in the Jefferson Exchange, which is the, the mailing, monthly mailing from the Jefferson Public Radio. And it was, I had referred to it about the homeless situation and kind of the history. There were some other, um, some points that, that were made, uh, by, in, in separate articles. I didn't copy those, but I, I will, I think it's worth reading, so brought that in today.
Thank you. Counselor Schultz?
Um, just to remind everyone who's watching, the North Bend Bulldog Pageant is a Saturday, our 16th at 6:00 PM. Um, the money goes to the children at Miracle Network Hospital, hospitals, so if you can't come, you could donate. Um, this is, it's been gone for a few years and now it's back, so it should be pretty exciting, and the kids are working really hard.
That's all. Counselor Gall?
Well, I got three community items, I, you know, to to tell everybody to come to the pancake feed. That used to be kind of the social event of the year when we uh, had a couple thousand people there and, and, um, you know, slapping ham and, and, um, flipping pancakes, but it, it is a really good community event, and Brownie and them guys do a great job. Uh, we also, this weekend, we have the, the Bay Area Sportsman's, uh, banquet, uh, and it's a, it's a fundraiser banquet, and I remember last year that we had, I'm on the board of directors for that. We handed out over $60,000 to special, you know, uh, special groups, but they all stayed. The farthest the money went away was Powell's. I mean, it's, yeah, it, it's all local money that it stays here. This is a, this is a group that formed after me and, uh, Ralph were in Ducks Unlimited for years and, and ran the, the whole district here, me and Ralph did it. And that, you, you, you'd make the money at the banquet and they'd want it mailed out of the, out of here the next day. This, I can attest to this, money all stays where in the community. Uh, and it's a, it's a, it's a great deal, and it's a great fun night. Be thirsty, my friend, that's the best I can say. And then the 3A basketball tournament. I, I can't touch on this enough, uh, you know, we were lucky enough to have our team win it three years in a row, but, uh, it, it brings so many people here and, and the money that is that's spent, uh, there's no motels left, there's no, and that, the, the other gal kind of touched on it for a while, but uh, this, this 3A thing was. the the other gal kind of touched on it for a while, but uh this this three A thing was it it's a, it's a great uh event for the community. Uh, I hope it stays here for a long time. I think it's our twelfth year now. Uh, anyway, I would have loved to have had our reader board up, but it doesn't sound like it worked, so uh there was lots of notification, now Ty's dynasty still got it on the reader board, but uh, anyway, it's, it is, it is a uh money bringing in to the area and and a great time. So that's, that's three good events for this area right there.
Good. Counselor Hamilton?
Um, I don't really have much to speak. Um, what Pat was talking about with the basket thing, I mean, well, when I first started golfing, I looked at the website and blown away about how they label which which baseball team or which club got all the money, so that was really cool to see. And uh the three A basketball thing, like Pat said, I don't know how many people I ran into. You could just tell they weren't from around here, so I chatted with them and, you know, directed them to different places that for food and stuff like that, so it was neat to meet the doctor, you know, that a couple of times about, you know, how clean stuff was around here, so. So I.
Counselor Jones?
So I want to give a shout out to uh the Couste Bay Council and City for actually meeting with the residents concerning the Deveraux Center like last Thursday. Um, delivering difficult news is as important as delivering the good news. And, you know, in the in the face of so many uh different kinds of uh changes that are out of our control, that we have to respond to. Transparency is a wonderful thing, so I just want to give a shout out to them for for making that effort and having those, starting those difficult conversations. Um, uh, on a similar note, I I think uh it was a good, I was happy to see that the city actually announced when we uh when we got our printer stolen and had a reward for that. I thought that was a good move. Um, and then the last thing I want to say is I want to uh thank the mayor, who's in DC right now, shaking the right hands um with the work of our staffers behind her to uh get the right connections for us to get our fair share of federal money um for a variety of our projects. Um, that effort that she's involved in now uh is a huge effort that involves city staffers, finding those opportunities, researching them. Um, it's just all kinds of work in getting our fair share, but it's required work. You know, shared resources are, every society has them, and I think it's really uh incredible that we're making such an effort to get our fair share here. So, nice work.
Good. Do we have any other business? We're gonna adjourn this thing. And then we're gonna come into this one. Right? Okay. I'll call the ordinance, North Bend Urban Renewal Agency meeting on Tuesday, March twelfth, two thousand twenty-four at seven thirty-three. Uh, we're gonna take a roll call.
Yes. Commissioner Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Goll.
Here.
Commissioner Goll.
Here.
Commissioner Schultz.
Present.
Commissioner Nora. Here, over. Thank you.
Do we have any public comments?
You do not.
Okay, then we'll pass that. Okay, then I'll look for a motion to approve the URA minutes from February twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February twenty seventh.
Right.
Had a first from Counselor Hamilton, a second from Counselor Jones to approve the URA minutes for February top.
The commissioners, no. All right, we're commissioners.
She'll change it. To approve the URA minutes from February twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have discussion?
Yeah, sure, sure.
I I I I do.
Any discussion? None? Okay, had a first and a second. Uh. All in favor of approving the URA minutes from February twenty seventh?
We already got it.
We're gonna eye it again.
Huh? Oh, we did that one. Oh, alright. Get as bad as just, yeah. Okay, we're.
There's a lot of.
I'm I'm not looking for a motion to pay the bills from February two thousand twenty-four.
I move to pay the bills for February twenty twenty-four and as presented.
I'll second.
A first from Counselor Jones, second from Counselor Hamilton or Commissioner Hamilton. To pay the bills for February two thousand twenty-four. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. You're up. Executive Director's report.
Thank you. Uh, very briefly, uh, want to say that um on Saturday, the president uh signed into bill, a minimalist bill. Uh, included in that is the four million dollars of an appropriation for uh workforce housing. This will be for uh educators, public safety workers, logistic employees, and healthcare providers. Um, this is a very unique uh appropriation, because normally they are low to moderate or uh affordable housing. This is workforce housing, so uh we're very, very grateful for uh this opportunity. Um, next steps, we'll be working with the State Historic Preservation Office to uh get the historic shipo uh clearance. We uh will then look at a salvage um agreement, and then we will start um marketing uh for uh partners to actually demolish and uh put in a potential mixed-use uh uh housing development um in uh twenty twenty-five. And um I also want to point out that uh the state of Oregon awarded us a sixty thousand dollar brownfield grant for the visitor information center. That is a joint uh towards a transient lodging tax slash urban renewal project. Um, and so uh if you recall, we came to you previously and asked for approval of a change order um that allowed us to take the roof up, um and that uh there were some asbestos and other things, and that we would simultaneously try to offset uh the price with uh that, and so um um, Karen Homelack, um, who uh retired at the end of February, um, uh stayed in great contact with me and made absolutely positively sure that she got that grant through and approved because she loves everything about North Bend and how we do what we say we're going to do. So with that, that ends my report. Back to you. Thank you.
Well, with that, we've got adjournment.